I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It's May 12th, 2021, and we will begin with our Commissioner's Statement. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear, and we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBD and MCCSC. And with that, we will, we don't have any changes to our agenda. I will note that all three of us are present, and we will move on to our department updates. Ms. Cottle from the Health Department.
Good morning. I want to start the morning by saying thank you for being proactive and approving our county regulations as they relate to COVID-19 in a proactive way prior to Senate Bill Five being, going into effect. So that has been quite the process over the last few weeks. So thank you very much for being proactive and for your support of public health. The vaccine front, last week, we, in the last week, we've had two outreach clinics, one at Boys and Girls Club at Crestmont and one at the Convention Center. Both of those were, we feel successes. We did about 60 vaccinations in each of those clinics and are continuing to plan additional outreach events. Today, we expect to hear about the ACIP's decision on approval of 12 to 15-year-olds being eligible for vaccine, for the Pfizer vaccine. So we anticipate that will come by the end of today, and as early as tomorrow, they could be eligible. We, we do have consent forms ready from the state and are just really awaiting that approval and further guidance on how we handle that parental consent and those kinds of things. So we've been working with our schools. We have plans in place, and as soon as we can confirm all of that, if approval does occur today, then we will share more of that information. But I would just say as a reminder, our site at IU Assembly Hall has Pfizer vaccine, so any day can be Family Day, and right now, anyone 16 and older is eligible for that vaccine. And if 12 to 15-year-olds are added, they will be able to make an appointment at Assembly Hall very, very quickly, and then we will plan school clinics as we can. In Monroe County, right now, eligible people are 16 and over, and we have fully vaccinated 43% of that population, and at least 50% have a first dose. Now, once that age group of eligibility drops, those numbers are going to go down because we're going to add population to that, and it could be anywhere from 5,000 to 10,000 people. I do not have an exact number at this time. So that percentage will drop when we add eligibility. So I wanted to make sure that I shared that with you today. In the state of Indiana, over 39% of the full, of the eligible population is fully vaccinated. So we do see our vaccination rates continue to go up, and we encourage everyone to consider being vaccinated. We do have appointments at Assembly Hall, so please take advantage of that. You can go to ourshot.gov to schedule an appointment, make it quick and easy when you get there, but walk-ins are accepted and you can go in. It just takes a little longer, but it's still super easy. So we encourage you to get your questions answered and schedule that appointment. This week, I always talk about where we are in terms of our metrics map, that color-coded map with the state. We will be designated yellow this week in that advisory color-coded map, and that is a composite score. This week, we had a 0.5, and that's based on the seven-day average of positive cases and the rate of cases per 100,000. So with that two metric score, we are at 0.5, which is blue. However, because we have been in yellow the past two weeks, we will stay in a yellow advisory until we have two weeks of blue. So we will continue to monitor that. If our numbers remain below 100 per 100,000, then we will move to a blue in that advisory next week. So little, I will end with a little bit of good news on that front.
Great. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Giffens?
Do the 16 and 17-year-olds who are currently eligible also need parental permission?
Yes, they do. With the 12 to 15-year-olds, I think that that just gets a little bit trickier because of the age. So we have been told an adult will have to be with them. One of the, one of the clarifications that we are waiting on is who that adult may be. So if they have the parental consent, then can any adult be there just as a precaution? Or does it need to be some sort of relative or, you know, family member designated person, something like that?
Yeah, so a few things to iron out still. But everyone, if you haven't, if you haven't gotten your vaccine, please do so. We, we are waiting to have a good percentage of our population vaccinated to make it safer for everyone. It helps open things up quicker. It helps keep our infection rate down. It saves lives, obviously. So there are a lot of benefits to getting the vaccine, so please, please, please do. Thank you, Ms. Cottle. All right. Next, we have Emergency Management. Ms. Moore, good morning.
Good morning. Thanks for having me this morning. We are in our second week of May, which is Electrical Safety Month, and so I'd like to start with just some three little helpful pointers in that regard. One is to make sure you replace and repair any damaged electrical cords. If there is a fray in your cord, please purchase a new one or borrow one from a friend, and do not use that cord for safety purposes. Keep your used and unused cords tidy and in a secure place. That makes them last longer, and then therefore they don't frail and cause any fires or damage. And then lastly, unplug your appliances if you are not using them. That is a very good way to make sure for fire safety purposes. So three helpful hints there to start with. Next week, I'll bring you some more exciting electrical prevention statements. We do have two blood drives scheduled in May. I have not received the April report, but I do know that it was successful. We were able to fill all those spots except for one, I think, and the amount of blood, it was, just in some previous discussion that we received, still hit our, so we're still continuing to have like that perfect score of what we're getting. So great news. I don't have all the amounts to share with you yet. I haven't gotten that back from the Red Cross, but I did get just a brief statement that it was successful. Our two May drives are May 24th, that's our day drive from 10 to 3:00, and May 27th is our evening drive from 2:00 to 7:00. So we still have a couple of weeks in there to make those appointments. You can hop to the redcross.org website to do so. Put in that 47401 ZIP code, and the Convention Center will pop up, and you can find what spot works for you at either one of those dates. We are going to have some rain. We have some nice days the rest of this week, but then it is going to start raining on Sunday. Right now, it looks like we're going to have about four or five days of solid rain. So I encourage people, you know, just to, just to be prepared for that, and we could potentially have some flash flooding with that just because we have so many days in a row that it will be raining. So that's my weather report. Any questions for me?
Thank you so much, Ms. Moore. Questions, comments? Commissioner Jones?
Well, I clearly have a bit of work to do with my electrical appliances, especially the tangled cords.
It's things like that we don't really think of, or we just know it's like that, and we don't think it's ever going to really be an issue, but when it becomes an issue, it's a really bad, bad deal. So I agree with that.
Well, thank you.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, thanks for the update.
Thank you so much, Ms. Moore. We appreciate you being here with us. And it looks like Lisa Ridge is not present at the meeting today, so we will see if there are any other department heads who have an update for us today. Just raise your hand if you do. Okay, I do not see any. And so next...
Someone?
I'm sorry?
Jackie Nestor has her hands raised.
Ah, Ms. Nestor Jellin, please.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
We sure can.
Okay, I just wanted to make an announcement that we are moving forward with our County Development Ordinance, Module Two, and so we'll be reaching out to Township Trustees to go over some of our drafting of the zoning map for the county areas. And so Township Trustees, please look out for an email, and then following that meeting, we will be bringing the maps out on the road to the public. We're still deciding how best to do that safely, but please be on the lookout our website, co.munroam.us. You can go to the Planning Department website, and then we also have a website, monrocdo.com, where you can sign up for updates and see any related information on progress.
Great. Excellent. Thank you so much. Appreciate that update.
Right, thank you.
Any other department updates? I'm going to check a different place here. I must have, oh, I did, I had the wrong screen open. Okay, I, now I don't see any. Thank you, Ms. Dayton, for that help. Next on our agenda is the proclamation. Commissioner Giffens?
Yes, this is proclamation in Recognition of Policeman Week in Monroe County. There are close to a million law enforcement officers serving communities across the United States, and we want to acknowledge the 50 dedicated members of Monroe County Sheriff's Office and the 15 volunteers in the Sheriff's Reserve. They, they make sacrifices every day for all of us, and we just want to make sure that we acknowledge everything they do for us.
Excellent. Thank you so much for that summary. So Police Week in Monroe County, May 9th to 15th, 2021. Thank you. Next, we have public comment, and this is for items that are not on our agenda. Each person is limited to three minutes total time. When you are at 2 minutes and 30 seconds, you will hear a tone. When you hear that tone, you have 30 seconds left. I swear that Ms. Dayton and I did not rehearse this, but it's going so well. Thank you, Ms. Dayton. When you hear that tone, you have 30 seconds left to complete your thoughts. So let's see if anyone has any public comment for items not on our agenda. Click on the raise hand button at the bottom of the screen if you do. It looks like we have Mr. Shelton. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jim Shelton with the Changer was speaking again right now on behalf of Court of Pointed Special Advocates or CASAs. We had a lunch and learn yesterday with some potential CASAs during which the staff updated our status numbers. We now are serving this year 358 children with 138 CASAs, but we've got 40 children right now waiting for a CASA to be available to be assigned. Now, the CASA office has reached out to us, active CASAs, and asked us to consider taking on a second case, and a number of us have agreed to do that, so that will be coming down, but still, the cases will keep coming. So we need citizens to volunteer to serve as advocates for children in the juvenile justice system, not because of anything they've done, most of, well, about half of them are under five, but because their parents have refused or neglected them. So we have a training upcoming in just about three weeks. It'll start June 7th and run through the 30th. It'll be Monday, Wednesdays, and Thursday evenings from 8:30, 5:30 to 8:30 via Zoom, and this would be a good opportunity for people who've been thinking about this to actually pull the pin and sign up and become a CASA. The first step would be to go to monroacasa.org, click on the volunteer link. You can find an application. You can find out online, fill out online, and that needs to be done here the next couple of weeks, as you can imagine, since the training is going to be starting June 7th. If this one will not work for you, but you're interested, the next training will be sometime in October. So please think about that. The children really need your help. Children who are in the system, who have a CASA typically are in the system a lot, a lot shorter amount of time and are statistically very rarely ever going to get into the system again. So it's a very good volunteer link. It helps the community, and it helps some wonderful kids that need somebody to advocate for them. So thank you for the opportunity to spread the word.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Shelton. And see if there's anyone else who has any public comment for items not on our agenda. Just raise your hand at the bottom of Zoom screen. Okay, I do not see any. So we will continue with our next agenda item. Item six, please.
Move approval of the minutes for May 5th, 2021.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any comments, corrections, edits? Okay. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on approval of minutes, May 5th, 2021?
Commissioner Thomas?
I'm going to abstain because I did not watch the meeting.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 2-0-1.
Thank you so much. All right, next item, please.
Move approval of the claims document, accounts payable, May 12th, 2021.
We have a motion. Can we get a second? Okay, thank you so much. Mr. Miller, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. The accounts payable claims total was $2,246,504.15. There were five claims accounting for approximately 90% of this total, beginning with Endot in the amount of $993,500, which was for Sample Road Phase One Construction Match, followed by E&amp;B Paving in the amount of $559,488.35, which was for the CCMG or Community Crossings Matching Grant paving project. Next was $248,386.28 for Wininger Construction for the release of a Sherry Bond for Highland Parcel E. Soft Choice in the amount of $150,771.31 for the Microsoft License for our Technical Services Department, and finally, $62,245.31 for Advanced Correctional for On-Site Medical and Mental Health Services for our jail.
Right, thank you so much, Mr. Miller. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
I go.
Commissioner Giffens? Okay, so let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Just raise your hand at the bottom of the screen. Okay, I do not see any. All right, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the approval of the claims document accounts payable, May 12th, 2021?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you.
Right, thank you so much. We will now move on to new business.
Move to approve Easy Vote Election Management Agreement. Fund name, election fund, fund number...
Thank you.
Dash 15, no, 1215-30006-0062 in the amount of $3,250.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. We have Ms. Martin and Ms. Wheeler present. I don't know who wishes to speak, but, here we go, Ms. Wheeler.
Yes, I'm Karen Wheeler and from, coming in from Election Central, and we are asking for approval for a new software system that is Easy Vote, and I can tell you that our campaign candidates are all going to love this. It enables people that need to file the CFAs, the Campaign Finance Act forms, the reports, they can do that any place that they want. They can do it from their home, they can do it virtually, well, I don't know if that's the right word, but from their computer, and it will be all online, and it really has some really nice things built into it. It will actually remind them to when their filings are due, and then when people fill out their forms, it actually won't let them go forward unless they fill out what they all need to fill out, and with the math, it does the math for them. Keeps the profile on file. It keeps the profile on file, and then once they have done it once, it will start to automatically fill in certain information.
It sends reminder emails to the candidates.
And it allows the public to go in and search for those things, check up on the candidates if they want. So is there anything that you would like to know more about that?
Great, thank you so much, Ms. Wheeler and Ms. Martin. Comments, questions?
I'm just very excited about this. I think it sounds like a really good idea. As a candidate, I remember trying to fill out the form online, and then when I tried to print it to bring it in, it wouldn't print because my computer didn't like the margins. So I'll be pretty happy, and also, it's wonderful to get the reminders, and I'm sure this must be saving the office quite a bit of time also, not having to send out all those reminders and everything.
Absolutely, yes.
Yep, well, thank you for looking at this.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Giffens, comments, questions?
Yes, well, I'm pleased that we're moving in this direction also, but I did want to see a copy of what our order was included with this contract because although we see a lot of the kind of, I don't know, things from Easy Vote, we don't see exactly what we have ordered here, because I know that they offer a lot more than just the things that we've, are contracting for.
We can set up, they, we use our state mandated forms. They will load those up in a pre-form package, and then whatever we want them to do, it will be included in our contract. Like if we want two emails sent or three, they'll do that. Our dates will be loaded in. Basically, you can put an app on your phone and do it via your phone, so all these things will be our choice as far as how we're going to build this system. It's already built, but the add-ons that we want to do.
We can even send them the penalties of them not filing, and so giving them a heads up if you don't get this filed in time, this is a penalty that could incur to you.
Right, but we have, we obviously have ordered something very specific from them related to just the candidate filings, and it doesn't take into account all the other kinds of voting work that they can do. So I just wanted to see what we are ordering included in our contract for us to sign. That's all.
I guess I just don't understand your questions, ma'am.
It is software.
So we...
Maybe, maybe if the Commissioners made the motion...
It doesn't say...
If the Commissioners made the motion contingent on the inclusion of the scope of services that we are, we are, we are getting with this contract, would that satisfy you?
Definitely. Thank you. Yeah, it doesn't specify the scope of the services. Thank you. That's exactly the way it needed to be described.
Should I redo the motion?
You can go ahead and amend the motion, that would be fine.
I would like to amend the motion to include the scope of services, or at least, I'm sorry, to pass it contingent on the scope of services.
Okay. You have a motion, I will second that. Mr. Cockrell, will you do a roll call vote on amending the motion, please?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion to amend is approved, 3-0.
Thank you so much. I have a question about the length of this contract. Is this a one-year contract? So this is going to become an annual payment?
Well, we're going to do it for a year, and there's, there's, yeah, see how it goes. I don't see it as a stumbling block. I see it as a stepping stone. We may want to go with another company that does even more. We just don't know. We could do it a year at a time.
Okay, that sounds good. And you, did you work with Technical Services Department on...
I did.
Okay, great.
I did, and Eric says he has no problem with it. They are cloud-based.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that, I think that helps a great deal. Excellent. I love this idea. I'm so glad you have brought it to us and very excited. I'm excited for all the candidates out there as well. I think this will be, although we'll all miss coming into the office a couple of times a year or once a year to see everybody's...
You can still file the old-fashioned way.
You can come by for a visit instead. So let's see if there's any public comment on this item. If you have public comment to make, you'll be limited to three minutes. Just raise your hand at the bottom of the Zoom screen. All right, I don't see any comments, and with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the Easy Vote Election Management Agreement?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Commissioner Giffens has lost her connection and is trying to reconnect right now.
The motion is approved, 2 to 0.
Great, thank you so much. Thank you both, Ms. Martin and Ms. Wheeler. We appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we will move on to item B, please.
Move to approve Indiana Family Health Council Grant Renewal. Fund name, Futures Title X. Fund number, 8126-9622 in the amount of $60,000, $60,961.
I will second that, and Ms. Cottle, will you tell us about it, please?
Certainly, so we have received the Title X grant that funds family planning, so supporting Futures Clinic since 2006. So this is an annual grant that we get, usually comes in increments, so we expect to get at least twice this. Last week, I came before you, I think it was last week, with our TANF money. And those funds will be used initially. Once they are used and they have to be used by the end of September, then we will start using these Title X funds. So typically in the fall, Indiana Family Health Council will look at our budgets, what we've used, what monies we have available, and then they will do an amendment to our contract to get us through that March 2022 site, portion of the cycle. So this is just a start to keep us going for the clinic and actually we're getting it a little bit earlier than we anticipated. So we're pleased about that. So just a grant renewal, really.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Ms. Cottle. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Just, it's exciting to be getting it early. It seems that it's more typical for us to get payments late.
Let's see if Ms. Giffens, Commissioner Giffens, has any comments or questions. I don't, it looks like she's trying to get back on.
Yes, I'm, I'm here. I'm gonna have to figure out where I can move to in the courthouse to have better, a more stable connection here. No, I'm really pleased, like Commissioner Jones, that we're able to have this, to support our people in our community, basically.
Yeah, yeah, this is really great news. I am, you know, the funding cycles are confusing, but you are on top of all of it. So thank you for that. And let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Just raise your hand, click on the raise hand button at the bottom of the screen if you have a comment. Okay, I do not see any. So, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the Indiana Family Health Council Grant Renewal?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, now we'll move on to item C, please.
Move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-one dash thirteen, Joseph Green PUD Outline Plan Amendment Two.
I, we have a motion. Do we have a second? I'll go ahead and second it. So we have a motion and we have a second and we have Mr. Myers here from the planning staff to present this item.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
We sure can.
All right, I'm gonna share my screen for a slideshow for us today. Okay, can everyone see this now?
Why I have to, because I-
Yes.
Okay, great.
Commissioner Giffens, could you mute? Commissioner Giffens, could you? Could you mute, please? Thank you. There you go, thank you.
All right, so we heard this a couple of weeks ago at the work session. I will go through this PowerPoint presentation to give us more details, as well as a recap of what we discussed at that meeting. So this is the Joseph Green Outline Plan Amendment Two, also known as Clear Creek Urban Planning and Development Outline Plan Proposal. The property is located in Perry Township, Section 20, at forty-eight thirty-one South Rogers Street and forty-eight thirty-three South Rogers Street. It's currently a multiple parcels, all zoned differently. That's RE1, RS 2.5 slash Pro Six, MR, and an existing PUD, which is the Joseph Green PUD at the moment. So this petition was heard at the Plan Commission Meeting on March twenty-third, 2021. That was the final hearing. And the vote was six to three to forward a positive recommendation with no additional conditions during that meeting. So here's a brief summary of the petition. The proposing a mixed-use development that would include attached townhomes, multifamily residences, and some commercial space. It's designed to provide additional housing options for working individuals and families in the county and act as a neighborhood center for Clear Creek Community. Proposal includes multiple road connections and alternative transportation connections, including a multi-use path, as well as the, that road extension into what would be the Southern Meadows subdivision area, which is adjacent to the east. And it is to be built out in three phases, proposed from July twenty twenty-one to July twenty twenty-four. Here I included the last recap we had from the Plan Commission Meeting that was heard on March twenty-third, 2021. This is also in the packet. Basically, in that meeting, Plan Commission members had discussed multiple topics that were of concern and of support for the PUD proposal. There was topics that were, some topics that were covered were the overall scale and density of the proposed development in the area. Given that the Clear Creek Urban PUD, this petition is upcoming, as well as the Southern Meadows PUD, which just received a positive recommendation from the Plan Commission. So we'll be hearing that in the next few weeks. And then there was the Trails PUD, which has now been withdrawn and is just a rezoned petition. So a lot of development going on in this area at this time. There was also some discussion about the height of the proposed structures with respect to the surrounding neighborhood and the notion that the mixed-use residential type with the commercial and on the main floor of things is overindulged in the county and the city. So those are some of the topics that were covered. There were also discussions on the, how it fits the comprehensive plan and the Mecua mixed residential designation, as well as how the site currently exists in a serious need of redevelopment. Currently, the Joseph Green PUD is more industrial-type uses. So the redevelopment would be providing a bit more amenity to a neighborhood scale and this area in general. I, through conversations with the petitioner and site visits, the current location is more or less a dump. There's scraps, tires have been tossed there. So there's been a lot of discussion about how this site needs some new redevelopment. There was public comment heard during the meeting. I have some of those letters of support and letters of opposition. In this presentation, they were also included in the packet. There were two new letters that have been added to this presentation that I received earlier this week from the petitioner. I believe that those letters were also emailed to each of the board members as well. So here we have the most accurate depiction of the site. Each of these parcels would be combined into one through this PUD amendment part, process, and then later down the road through the development plan process of the planning and development, it would receive a subdivision to create each of the lots for the townhomes and the structures. So each of these parcels would, will be acquired by the petitioner or already have been acquired by the petitioner. The red area is the existing Joseph Green PUD that has those industrial-type uses. The green area is a portion of the property recently added by quiet way of title. It was an abandoned railroad corridor. And then the yellow sections are transfer areas from the Southern Meadows petition that have yet been recorded and added to the petition site. So those will be transferred over through the Type E process with planning staff review. Okay, so we had a little bit of this discussion as well. Early on in the process, there was the fact that the petition site was under some enforcement by the building department. And since then, that has been rectified. I just included that letter again here in case there was any confusion through reviewing the packet or any details, just kind of giving a full summary here. So this letter certifies that the building department has no longer have anything in enforcement for the property. What it was entailing was basically there was an existing structure on the property where they had received a demolition permit to demolish it. And then instead of demolishing the entire building, they demolished the middle part and left the sides of the building standing. So there was some discussion of whether or not that was allowed or not, but that has since been remedied. So here's the location map. You'll notice that this depiction of the petition site isn't quite as accurate as this one. So just keep in mind that this is the most accurate representation in all of the maps that you'll see moving forward. These are more just reference purposes. So here's a comprehensive plan. Again, it's Mecua mixed residential and then also Mecua open space. This green area that you see here highlighted is actually floodplain. So a lot of this, exactly the entirety of this parcel up here will be open space within the PUD ordinance and will also exhibit a walking trail for pedestrians, as well as some park benches and a picnic table as well. Okay, so here we have the list of all the proposed uses. This has seen many different iterations through each of the committee meetings and with discussions from planning staff. So this is the most up-to-date list that we have. So you'll see that I broke it down by zoning district. RE1, RS 2.5, and MR are the existing zones. Those are more or less residential. They don't have really any commercial applicability. And then the existing PUD, the Joseph Green one, there are some that are retained that were originally in that beauty. But as you can see, numerous new proposed uses are listed here and in the outline plan. And that's to provide a somewhat neighborhood amenity, as well as the large list of them is to accommodate market fluctuations because the petitioner is not, you know, totally sure at this stage what will go in there, but these are just some options. If any changes to this list need to come through, I believe it would likely need to go back to the Plan Commission for review. So there's that. And then there's also these additional new uses down here that the petitioner defined and added as well. These uses are not currently in the Monroe County zoning ordinance, Chapter eight oh two, or eight oh three, or excuse me, eight thirty-three, but they are added with the outline plan. All right, the next few slides are some details about the design standards. I don't want to go through any of them specifically because it'll take up a lot of time to just go line by line. But if we have any questions about any of them, we can come back and look. But basically, each of the areas are broken down here and it will show a a conceptual map here in a moment that will give you a better idea of where these, each of these areas are and what will be going in each of the areas. Essentially, Area A is the designated floodplain and will also be open space. That will, that's where the park trail will be. Area B is where the largest building will be located. It will have a few floors of residential space apartments. And then on the bottom floor, it will have space enough for multiple commercial uses, up to five, but can be any number between one and five, or even be converted to residential if the commercial uses don't work out. So that's the largest building and the tallest building. There will be residential garages in the rear of the structure. I believe there will be eight. Area C is where the paired townhome structures will be, fifteen units in total. They will all also have garages in the back of those buildings. And then finally, Area D is on the southmost portion of the property. And it has one structure on it that will be commercial space on the bottom floor and then residential on the, on the top. Again, there will be parking available for this area. And then Area E is designated open space and will also serve as a detention for stormwater. All right, now we have parking. I will say that there is one correction to be made to the packet that was provided to you. In that packet, there was a total of eighty-eight parking spaces. It's actually eighty-six. The change comes from correction here where in the packet I stated that there are ten residential garages for Area B, which is the large structure. Instead, there's actually eight residential garages. So it changes the numbers a bit, just a little. And then here's the rest of the breakdown for each of the areas for parking. So each of the areas will have shared parking spaces and then residential garages, totaling eighty-six parking spaces. Over here, we have a proposed minimum off-street parking requirement as outlined in the planned, the outline plan. So one point six spaces per unit for single-family dwelling and then the following standard tier, commercial space, one space per one thousand gross floor area. And then in this table here, I tried to give a breakdown of what those, the allotted parking looks like with respect to what would be required by ordinance, the Monroe County zoning ordinance. So Area B, there's going to be up to twenty residential units. If all of those units were two-bedroom, that would mean there'd be required thirty-two spaces. There's up to five commercial spaces in this area. And based on the gross floor area calculation, that would likely come out to thirty-seven spaces. So in the end, the parking spaces provided here are twenty-three and then the required parking spaces by Monroe County zoning ordinance would be sixty-nine. I added an asterisk to each of these to state that part of the planning and development outline plan states that each of these areas are to share parking in between each other. There's not just one section has, is bound by its own parking. They'll be sharing it all. So just keep that in mind. And then just more breakdown here for each of the areas. For Area C, residential units, fifteen, that would be required, twenty-four spaces if they were all two-bedroom. There's no commercial uses in this area. So parking spaces provided would be thirty-eight and then the required would be twenty-four. Area D, only one residential unit, assuming that it was a two-bedroom, it would require two spaces. Commercial uses, there's only one and based on the gross floor area, it would require four spaces. And the parking provided in this area is twenty-five and then the required number would be nine. So I'd give a final total here of parking spaces provided are eighty-six and the spaces required would be a hundred and two. So there is a conversation, ongoing conversation about parking and how that will pan out for this development. Moving on to infrastructure and access. A lot of the things that are needed are already in place, such as there's a water line, existing city Bloomington Water Main. Sanitary sewers are available in the area. And then stormwater management will be managed underground on the north parcel, which is Area B and then as well as the Area E on the southmost end of the property. And all of that stormwater management will be coordinated with Monroe County Drainage Ordinance requirements and MS four coordinator through the development plan process. We do have a preliminary drainage plan in this packet and in this presentation that I can show. But again, a lot of that, a lot of those details will be hammered out with the MS four coordinator later in the development plan stages. Roadways, South Rogers Street and West That Road, they will be extended across the project site as part of the majors of the Southern Meadows subdivision. So that, West That Road extension will be the responsibility of the Southern Meadows developer to build out. There will be turn lanes established on those to accommodate traffic safety through the traffic study that is a part of your packet. There's a link to it in that packet. It talks about how a four-way stop at the West That Road and South Rogers Street intersection would likely be required based on all the developments that are going on in this area. Sidewalks will be constructed on West That Road as part of the Southern Meadows subdivision again. And then of course, there will be the multi-use path that I've stated before along South Rogers Street going north to south along the PUD, this PUD site. Okay, so here is a conceptual map of what the development could look like. This section here is Area B with building number one. Again, you can see the parking here. There's residential garages in the back here. This is Area A, which is all on floodplain. Again, you can see the walking path here. And then the multi-use path coming through to the development that I just talked about. This section, buildings two, three, and four This section, Buildings 2, 3 and 4 is Area C. And those are the townhomes. Again, each with parking in the garages in the rear. And then there's the additional parking spaces here. And then this is building, or excuse me, Area D with building number five, residential on the top floor and commercial on the main floor. Additional parking all around in this area. And then this is Area E, which most likely would be detention, stormwater detention. And then this is the buildout of the West that Road extension and intersection with South Rogers Road. And there has been some conversation and it is listed in the PUD ordinance that these parking areas as well will allow the use for the United States Post Office right across the street here. The petitioner has talked about wanting to provide additional parking for this area since a decent number of customers to this post office already parked in this area, which is a gravel offshoot and then walk across because there's hardly any parking up front. So that has been a discussion with this development plan as well. So here's just a couple zoom in images of each of the segments of this petition, proposed, proposed petition site. We can come back to these if we want to look at any of them more specifically. It kind of just gives a breakdown of each of the buildings and what is provided in them. Here is the preliminary drainage plan that I spoke about. Again, detention underneath Area B, which has building number one. And then the above-ground detention area in Area E to the south of the petition, proposed petition site. Here is some exhibits that highlight the height of the proposed site. These are just ideas, breakdowns of what, what the comparison of the area. So each of these numbers coincide with one of these images and their associated height. So this image here to the left shows the height of building number one. So at its tallest, it'll be 42 feet and then it'll taper down to 32 feet. This picture over here is a structure that has been built already by the petitioner. I believe it's in French Lick, they could correct me if I'm wrong. But it has similar height dimensions to give you an idea of what it could look like. And then here's some more depictions of the other buildings in the area. So Building 2 and the rest of them that are the townhomes, you can see down here in the models. That's what they are planning to build, especially with the sawtooth look that are, that are a callback to the downtown area of Bloomington and the government centers. Okay, so here we have a section for letters of support. There's also letters of remonstrance in the section as well. This is one of the newer letters, I believe, that were sent to the commissioners as well. So I'm sure you've, you've read this. But it's essentially a local employer and business owner for this development. And another one here, a local business owner and employer showing their support for the proposal. And then these are the previous letters of support that we had heard at the Plan Commission meetings that are offering their support for the redevelopment of the site and excited for the amenities that could be provided to the neighborhood. Another letter of support. And then we have a few letters of remonstrance. Basically, the letters of remonstrance are concerned about the rentability of the units that will be constructed as well as talking about urban sprawl and concern for how the development will impact the neighborhood based on looks and just build out, I should say. Okay, so now we come to the status of this petition. Again, the Plan Commission voted to forward this petition to the county commissioners with a positive recommendation. During that meeting, they did not offer any additional conditions. The vote was six to three. And it is, the no conditions that were added is an effect that the planning staff originally recommended denial and didn't offer any conditions at that time. So if the Board of Commissioners wanted to add any conditions of this approval that they felt appropriate, you could. However, those conditions would then be presented back to the Plan Commission for final approval. If the Plan Commission edited any of those conditions, then we'd come back to the commissioners for a reapproval. So now I will open it to any questions.
Sorry, let me unmute. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Myers. We appreciate that. Let's go first to Commissioner Jones, comments, questions?
Yeah, I have a, well, one question. I'm just wondering in exactly what way this development will be an urban center or a neighborhood center. I'm sorry. I mean, I realize it provides some commercial uses, but usually I think of a neighborhood center as being a gathering place.
Sure. So in their outline plan, they talk about how they want this development to be a neighborhood center, if you will. And in that, they're talking about providing some commercial space and patio space for members of the public to gather, have a cup of coffee or take part in whatever businesses may be going on there, commercial activity, as well as take part in the provided walking trail and the multi-use path that could ultimately connect further north to segments of the city of Bloomington Trails. So that's the kind of gist of what they're going for. It's a walkability type zoning development and also a place for people to gather for commercial activity, if you will.
So really, the ability to gather is dependent on what businesses might go in there.
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, I, I find, I agree that this is an area that some development would be really nice in. If not that pleasant, have a dump right by the major road, especially an uncontrolled dump. At the same time, I'm pretty concerned about the parking situation. I believe that before you had said that there's no real street parking available in that area at all. Is that right?
Yes, so there wouldn't be any, any parking available along South Rogers Street. All of the parking that you, that this development is proposing would be onsite. Let me see if I can go back. Essentially, it would be these spaces that are outlined here.
Yeah.
And then, of course, the garages.
With the number being so much lower than the recommended amount, it, it really concerns me, especially for the residents. If, if an extremely popular business goes in and the spaces are all mutually shared, then it could end up with a business using so many spaces that residents wouldn't be able to go home. They'd have no place to leave their car, which I see as fairly major problem. I'm also, while I do agree that development in this area wouldn't necessarily be a bad thing. I, Rogers Street can't really be widened. There are no plans now other than for the turn lanes to widen it. And I'm really, I'm quite concerned about the density that's being talked about in that area. I'm afraid we could end up with traffic problems that we can't really do much to solve. And that's it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Let's see if Commissioner Githens has any comments or questions for Mr. Myers.
Sorry, I, it's been quite a day so far. Yeah, I feel that this is too dense and I'm really think that we need a significant number, more, larger number of parking spaces with the kinds of commercial entities that they're proposing to put in there. Those don't always look like an eight to five or nine to five kind of commercial enterprise. So that there would be customers taking up some of those parking places. And so I, I am not in favor of the current design because of the limited number of parking spaces and the density that's there. One of the things that had been presented to me was that this could also potentially provide parking for the US Post Office that's sort of across the street. And so you're, you're robbing people who live there of even more potential spaces. And so I don't have anything more to add beyond what Commissioner Jones has said too about Rogers Street and the traffic that we're likely to see there. Thank you.
Thank you both. And just for clarification, the petitioner at the last Plan Commission meeting stated that they own the parcel, the vacant parcel just to the east, right, of the current post office and that they would plan to develop that as a parking area for the post office. Is that one of the conditions, Mr. Myers, that they've already agreed to?
For recording? Yes, that was a verbal statement that did not get an official condition of approval. So right now, it's just a verbal commitment by the petitioner that they would develop that parcel for parking for the post office.
Right, so it's not a verbal, it's, I'm sorry, it's not a recorded commitment? And in our programs. Okay, great. So that's important. If that's important to any of my colleagues, that would be something that you could require as a condition. Mr. Myers, can you review at the end of, at the recommendation section? Planning staff had recommended denial based upon what?
Sure. So originally, planning staff recommended denial of this petition based on findings of fact that stated to the extent to which the proposal departs from zoning and subdivision regulations such as density, dimension, bulk use, required improvements and construction and design standards, essentially stating that planning staff felt that there was too much density going on in this proposal, too much going on for the allotted acreage and that a decent number of the design standards set forth in the zoning ordinance are being deviated too much from. We understand that a planning and development essentially by nature is deviating from the ordinance. But what we do as the planning staff is we compare that to the ordinance and then offer a recommendation. So in this section here, this was included in the packet as well. Basically, it's a breakdown of what concerns planning staff still had at the time of the meeting on March 23rd, 2021 for the Plan Commission. So each of these sections or bullets were something that planning staff were still concerned about. A number of them have been fulfilled or were communicated by the petitioner. And that's all that in the red text. So it was just a number of things that came up for planning staff that we wanted to see be addressed. And then a lot of those addressing from the plan, from the petitioner were made after the packet went out for the Plan Commission. So they had to be restated during the meeting and here as well. I'm trying to think if there's any of them that are outstanding. Because I believe all of them were somewhat fulfilled by the petitioner, at least these concerns. But planning staff still maintained the overall recommendation of denial.
Thank you for reviewing that. Okay, so next, we can hear from the petitioner, petitioner's representative. Obviously, they're going to be positively swayed toward supporting this petition. If you could limit your comments to new information, please, so that we're not repeating the same information. And let's see who we have. We do have a hand raised. Is that Ms. Cassidy? I'm not sure.
Yes, it's Ms. Cassidy or Mr. Florrie under the TC name.
Go ahead, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, okay. I'm sorry, I had a little bit of difficulty there unmuting my screen. I don't mean to be redundant in my presentation. However, I will say that I would like to do this petition justice. I know that not everyone has seen a presentation on my part and I just want to provide some information for the public who maybe haven't seen it as well. So I would like to begin by just introducing myself. My name is Tammy Wykel-Cassidy and I am a long-term resident of Clear Creek. I've lived there most of my life. I'm really glad to be bringing this project before you today. I drive by this project every day and I have for quite some time. And I'm just trying to introduce a redevelopment of an otherwise depressed property. Okay. I'd like to start out with a little bit of a quote that's been an inspiration for me on this project. And the quote is by Rebecca Solnit. "It had come to me not in a sudden epiphany, but with a gradual sureness, a sense of meaning like a sense of place. When you give yourself to places, they give yourself back. The more one comes to know them, the more one seeds them with the invisible crop of memories and associations that will be waiting for you when you come back." This is an appeal that I'm making regarding this property and this development. Because this development has a lot of history in the area that surrounds a mixture of businesses and residents and has since the mid 1800s when the railroad first established a depot there. You can see the picture on the left is the muddy road that went past the Clear Creek Depot. There were limestone mills, the post office in 1870, two general stores, a successful rancher. And the Clear Creek Christian Church has been there for quite some time, along with an Odd Fellows building. And on the right today, we still have a mixture of businesses and homes like Stella's, the Wampler House, the post office still, an upholstery place, a couple of gems, and we're right in the center of four schools. And I feel like this proposal organically grows in terms of residences and commercial uses that have been there for a long time and that are still there. As Drew said, this property site is not the prettiest thing. It never has been. I remember being on the school bus as a grade schooler and going past it every day and wondering, you know, what in the world? Why, why isn't that a nicer place? Our current PUD identifies it as light industrial uses, which I would hate to fall back on in a development way. So I wanted to bring something forward that would bring synergy to the neighborhood. And there are a lot of recognizable benefits to this property. I got with some community officials, county officials and staff back in 2017 and first represented the idea of a multi-use pass along the front side of this property so that it could accommodate the houses along the other side of the street. Reason being, they're very close to the road. They've all been there since the late 1800s up to 1930. And so this is an ideal way of having a multi-use path and serving multiple people as far south as it can go on this property itself. So just really wanting to accommodate the neighborhoods, we when we were first notified of a possible development behind this property, who needed an ingress egress point, we thought it might be ideal based on a previous thoroughfare plan to show that we could basically have an entrance here and that this entrance would be a way of bringing it even further into that neighborhood community and offering some businesses that people would use in their everyday lives. It's so boring down there right now. If you, if you're staying at the bed and breakfast, you have no place else to go and maybe have a salad or a sandwich or a smoothie or a coffee. You could walk to the post office, but you're not going to have any mail because you're a guest at the bed and breakfast. So my point is, this finally offers, offers an opportunity to have a few things that people can enjoy. When I first bought this property in 2016, people would stop in and ask me, hey, what are you guys going to do with this? I can't wait until you do something and have someplace where we can go to and maybe, you know, sit down with a couple of friends. We, so we attended the neighborhood meeting that was held by AEI in July 2019. It was a pretty awesome meeting. There were tons of people there. It was in the Clear Creek Cafeteria and really good participation. And I got a lot of great feedback about that original idea and gained ideas from people in the area. And then in early 2021, after we had submitted for the outline plan amendment, we wanted to have another Zoom meeting, which lent itself to a lot of limitations compared to that 2019. But, you know, we've gotten such great feedback from the neighbors, such positive feedback. In the January 19th meeting, the feedback was, you know, there were 10 neighbors that waited two hours and 50 minutes that meeting so that they could say, I'm in favor of this petition. And Drew has nicely shown within the PUD outline plan amendment, the gist of this project. This is a model that I made to describe the project. The photograph on the left is the apartment building slash commercial downstairs. The back of that building is all garages that are individual apartment garages. There will be eight of those and one additional access point for people with bicycles so that they can keep them parked inside of the building. That building height is 45 feet, and our current PUD allows for 45 feet. The additional buildings to the south, which are the ones we would like to have the sawtooth evoking that, the showers and kind of giving us that fit into the structures that are there from the late 1800s to 1930 with this building as well. That height limitation is 35 feet. That is less than our current PUD. So it's, it's the height should be an aside from what already exists for that PUD. And so as Drew said, it's single-family residential. In this section right here, there are three buildings with gaps in between with a sawtooth look in the front so that it will take on that, that shower's appearance. In this outline plan, there are multiple areas. The area to the north is the open space. And this right now is wooded, but it has a lot of invasive stuff growing up in it. As part of the plan, it would be just to remove those invasive ground covers and to have a nice picnicking area with table and benches. The next area, Area B, has the Smithville Building to the north, and it would be the apartment building to the south. And then the multi-use path goes up from being along the front and it crosses into the back so that it can enjoy, adjoin the existing rail line with hopes that maybe we can get up to that trail someday if we're, if we're able to work through that restoration. And when I say we, I mean, we as developers, because I know that Tom Weiniger is working on that possibly for his project and maybe getting that fixed. It's a super heavy-duty existing trestle, old trestle bridge. And then this area, Area C, which is the third area down, that's the townhome area that will be subdivided for the townhome lots that are individually can be bought and sold. And then the last two areas, one is for the building with parking lot, which is a small commercial building, 40 by 40 with an apartment upstairs, and then the detention to the south. So in Area B, this is the likeness of the apartment building. This is just a photograph that I took of the building in French Lick and applied some photo shopping to it, but that's what it looks like today. We will not be making it as tall with the towers due to the request of the height. So our original plan was 55. We're cutting that down to 45 with three stories instead of four. So that's one of the steps that we took to, to bring down the size of the building considerably and it can meet the current PUD. I will say that this top level precipice on the plan where we built this building is 42 feet. So we were asking for a little bit above that, just in case we need that room for elevation purposes. It's not to change the, the structure of what we built. Siding materials, we chose to designate and commit to brick or stone facing South Roger Street and that road. So it's a, it's a lovely appearance back to, again, to the time period when these buildings would have been built. So Area C, I think that, well, I'll go back to Area B just for a second, because I do want to say that the parking calculations, again, on the planning staff's part are still including the parking spaces, the parking area in their square footage requirements for the commercial. And that simply would not be accurate. That would be like counting that twice. The commercial area will be the front of the building. The back of the building is for the residential garages. Again, the sawtooth blending in with the turn of the century with the individual garages in the rear. And then this is that singular building. We'd like for it to look very throwback. With the neighborhood benefits to this project, it just, it really does establish a core because it gives you someplace to go finally. I mean, other than going to the post office. It provides neighborhood businesses that serve the residents. We've listened to our neighbors as what they had to say and what they would like to see. It provides apartments in a geographic area where they're sorely needed. Try and send your kid to Clear Creek and find an apartment to live in. It's just not out there. The townhomes will be modest-sized dwelling units. This improves the safety for the parking for post office patrons. It improves the alternative transportation infrastructure, utility access for neighboring properties, and promotes green and green energy initiative providing electric vehicle charging. I will also say that having these additional homes available to workforce housing type of people allows them to live here in Monroe County instead of commuting from Owen County, Green County, and other places where they're choosing to go right now because they just can't find housing, you know, in their price range. An apartment dwelling is considered an entry-level place to live, and we think we should have a few in this area. It's definitely a challenge I had back at one time in my life. We also think that it makes great fit with the land use policies in the 2012 Monroe County Comprehensive Plan. It's classified as urban residential, which is four to 20 units per acre. This parcel is 4.12 acres. In one of our meetings, it was stated that it was one and a half, and that is not the case. This is 4.12 acres. Take out the right-of-way for that road makes 3.23 acres, which leaves us at an overall density for this project at 11.46 per acre, beautifully fitting four to 20. 2015 Monroe County Urbanizing Plan, mixed residential, 10 to 14 units per acre. Again, fits beautifully. 11.46 is our number. The Monroe County 2016 Urbanizing Area Plan, you know, it's a neighborhood development. It's consistent with mixed residential. We just want to move away from the previous light industrial uses and have some synergy for the neighborhood is what we're trying to accomplish. I also want to point out on this particular slide, it's just, it seems to be a fantastic fit. The areas that are green are both the common areas of our project and the project behind us, which has previously been approved for Southern Meadows, and it carries forward into their current petition. Look at all this green around our buildings. This, we think this is just really a fantastic outcome. So the goals of this outline plan amendment is to identify a foundation of the parameters that effectively serve as a basis for design of a future development plan. And I will say that we have already talked with our engineer about a parking lot to the north of the Clear Creek Post Office. We think this would be very helpful, and we would, we're definitely looking at that. So an outline plan, as you know, it gives you, you know, based on chapter 811, it's a generalized idea. That's what we're here to do is we're here to say this generalized idea fits. These are parameters that fit. And then we were, we are really looking forward to this development plan, part of the process where we can lay out the accurate and precise locations of everything, including parking, streets, any of the details required within these buildings. So this is the end of my presentation. I do want to open the floor. Michael Florrie would like to say a few things. I wanted to share with you that in the background of this photograph, that's a picture of me picking up my report card in fifth grade and leaving the school. My friend on the back there, you can see hers in her right hand. And, you know, these are the kind of things that are memories and, and, you know, dreams are made of, and I hope to create future memories for other kids that are in this Clear Creek area. And Michael, I'm going to turn this over to Michael.
Good morning. I'm Michael Florrie, and I've been assisting Tamby with this project for almost two years now in various roles. Tamby's given you an excellent picture of the project and how it reflects her personal dream for this area where she was born and raised. And I'd like to add a couple more perspectives. First of all, I just want to begin by answering a question that hasn't even been asked. Why blind squirrels? The name comes, it turns out, from a folk saying, even a blind squirrel gets an acorn on occasion. When Tamby first explained the source of the LLC's name to me, I assumed it was a sort of joking nod towards good luck, which every business must hope comes its way. You may remember that Herman Wells titled his autobiography, Being Lucky, an acknowledgement of the role that luck played in his life and in his leadership of Indiana University, building it into a world-class institution. But in just the past couple of weeks, I've had an epiphany about the name. It came from looking back on how this project has developed. If a blind squirrel finds an acorn, you can be certain it is because she's been hustling twice as long and twice as hard as a side squirrel. That's the way Tamby has approached this project. What Tamby doesn't do well is brag or pat herself on the back. That's a perspective I'd like to add to give further reassurance to the commissioners and others about the potential success of this project. It's an intangible, but it's something that, that is vital. You've seen a few pictures that go back to the good old days when we could meet in person, not in Zoom. Tamby, her husband Randy, and I attended every public meeting at which the neighboring Southern Meadows project was presented to the public. The attendees were Tamby's neighbors and friends, and the California developer at that time wanted to highlight the plans that Tamby was developing as an adjacent project that would complement the Southern Meadows project. Tamby stayed long after the meeting ended, the Southern Meadows AEI meeting, to stay long after that meeting ended, long after the California developers had left the room to continue the discussion with her neighbors and get feedback from them on their hopes and concerns for both projects. What would you like to see built here? What would be important to you? That's a question that was asked and answered. The neighbors are sophisticated. They're vigilant, and they're engaged in what is proposed for their community. They were able to keep us informed about developments in the Fullerton Pike project that will serve as a major improvement of traffic patterns in the area. I've watched commissioner meetings where Lisa Ridge has come back and reported to you on various stages and heard input from the, the neighbors at those public meetings. So they've got their fingers on the pulse of this. When we talked to neighbors, we heard two major concerns. They were primarily traffic and drainage. As you heard after last week's work session, your in-house staff has reviewed the drainage plan that is part of the outline plan. The drainage plan developed for this project is engineered to provide four times the minimum requirement to meet the ordinance standards that no project should result in an increase of water flowing from the parcel. This project is actually going to significantly improve the flow of water from this parcel due to the, the major drainage pond that's put in down at the south and under the, the large building. The water retention is going to be vastly improved as a result of this project. But there are current other problems that are just caused offsite that we don't have any control over. We can't do anything to remedy, but we're not going to be contributing to them. At that same work session, Paul Saturday informed you that traffic studies indicate that a stop sign would be warranted at the intersection of that road in South Rogers, where the extension of that road will cross into the Southern Meadows development. At some as-yet-undetermined point in the future, a stoplight may be warranted. That fact, in addition to the Fullerton Pike work that Lisa Ridge is spearheading, bodes well for effective traffic control at this area. With any luck, adding businesses in the Clear Creek project that serve the neighborhood should help cut down some on neighborhood trips into Bloomington, providing goods and services right there in the neighborhood. Lee, you asked important questions. What kind of, how is this actually going to become a neighborhood center? That will depend in many ways on the intangible of Tamby's working with proposals as they come forward. I, I think I would bet anything that one of the first businesses that will go in there will be some sort of coffee shop, small restaurant, gathering place for food across from the post office, and that will serve to play that kind of role. But that's an intangible that is going to be under the control of Tamby, who is going to be doing the interviewing of the individual businesses as they apply and want to come forward. Tamby's work ethic bodes well for the success of this project. Trust me, no one wants to succeed any more than Tamby does. She's got real-world experience with the rental history of the building in French Lick that serves as the model for the apartment business structure in Clear Creek. She has real-world experience in helping renters and businesses survive during a pandemic, as Jeff Beeson, Lenny Bushes told you in their letter of support. This project is her dream, but it's not a pipe dream. It's based on real-life experience. Let me quickly share one personal anecdote. Members of the plan commission met with Tamby, Drew Myers, and Jackie Nestor-Gillen at Clear Creek for an onsite visit. I showed up early to help Tamby get things in order. She was already there with her leather gloves on, loading bells of, unloading bells of hay for visitors to sit on and pitching an abandoned tire into the bed of the pickup. She was raised on a farm and She was raised on a farm and learned early that when there's work to be done, it has to be done right away. I think surely the, the farmer who sits on the board of commissioners understands that kind of history of. Needed to, to meet the demands of work, right time and get them taken care of. And, and all of the commissioners know that when you're faced with snowstorms coming in and other things. You buckle down and you work to solve the problem, problem. Tamby's involvement is going to continue at the next stages of refining the development plan and go on to the eventual interviews of businesses and persons wanting to work and live in this new. Revitalized area of Clear Creek. And she will continue to interact with her neighbors and friends to keep this project a vital contribution to the neighborhood. You can look at a two-bedroom apartment. If it's rented to four separate people with four separate cars, you know, you're going to have certain demands on parking. If it's rented to one individual who wants to use a. An apartment or bedroom as a workspace office, assuming that that's going to be a pattern that continues far into the future. Then you only have one car. Demand on the, on the parking provided in the area. So these are areas in which. On a direct interaction with Tamby and others can have definite control over. What kind of, what kind of demands are placed on the resources? She understands how that works. As a final comment, I'd like to look at the slide or focus on the slide that you have in front of you and reiterate. What it does show. It's a building, one is a large building. But it's almost a picture that you had a house for sale that was next to the Hoosier National Forest. You would want to point out that fact to potential buyers. The green that you see outlined is not just the. The flood plain green at the north of our project. It also spills over into the permanent green space that is platted. And not intended to be changed in any way by the Southern Meadows. So a large building suddenly becomes a. Becomes kind of set in a nice permanently green park, park-like area. The large building did raise initial concerns as being too large for the area. And in response to requests by Commissioner Thomas at the Plan Commission level, the building height was pared down to the extent. That's economically feasible, consistent with providing much-needed apartments for the entry-level living opportunities in the area. There are approximately thirty changes that have been made to the proposal. Based on requests by planning and others and things that have been conveyed to us by the, by the community. To make this, I would say, a much better proposal than, than it started out. And that kind of willingness to work and make this better, make this succeed, it's not going to change in any way. If we want to take just a quick minute and highlight things from actual statements from the land use policies that factor into. The vision for this area. The two thousand twelve Comprehensive Plan actually states. Urban-scale residential, single-family housing on a range of smaller lot sizes and multifamily residential housing. Some of which may be in combination with employment uses or other commercial uses designed to serve. The residential community are sought in this area. The two thousand fifteen Monroe County Urbanizing Area Plan. Mixed residential neighborhoods accommodate a wide array of both single-family and attached housing types. Integrated into a cohesive neighborhood. They may also include neighborhood commercial uses as a local amenity. And the two thousand sixteen Monroe County Urbanizing Plan. Is intended to provide a greater opportunity for diverse housing types and densities. Mixed-use nodes may be appropriate at key locations within this larger district. And what you have with the extension of that road across this parcel and into the Southern Meadows. Is the creation of this kind of node, this kind of gateway where these types of developments. Fit in perfectly according to the, the planning documents we have established. Much more could be said, but it may be best to end here. To thank the elected officials, the staff. And the citizen appointees on the Plant Commission for their hard work and helpful suggestions. Also want to thank the neighbors who've fed very strongly into, to this, this vision. Approval of this outline plan will just be the next step on a much, on much more hard work, but that is no complaint. It's work to build a community, a dream we're sharing and striving for. Thank you all so much for your, your work on this. And we hope you can vote to support it and send it on to its next level. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so. Let's see if there's anyone else from the public who wishes to offer comment. On this, it looks like we have. Nice five hands raised right now, six. Okay, and. I would just like to remind everyone that you're limited to a total of three minutes per person. On this particular item. So first, let's hear from those who support. This petition. And then we'll hear, so if you've raised your hand and you're opposed. You can unraise your hand and we'll come back to you. And then we'll hear from those who are opposed. So supporters first, it looks like we have Mr. Warren.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good morning. I'm Dave Warren. I live in the Fieldstone neighborhood on the west side, but I used to live right around this area when we lived. I'm a very south end of Bloomington and our family would have loved this when we, when we lived there. And at first, I'd like to thank the commissioners for recently unanimously passing the county's Housing as a Human Rights Resolution. That was an important recognition of the enormous housing challenges Monroe County faces. Across the entire spectrum of housing needs from those experiencing homelessness to middle-class families struggling to find homes to own or rent. Today, the commissioners have an opportunity to affirm the intent of that resolution by approving this PUD petition that would bring some much-needed housing diversity to the Clear Creek area. Not only would this project result in up to thirty-six homes. It brings an important mixed-use anchor to a growing part of the community that will serve existing neighbors along Rogers. As well as many new neighbors who will be living in the coming Somo project directly to the east. Indeed, today's packet is full of many supportive comments from nearby residents and community, community members. Who appreciate the diverse vision of the project and the important proposed infrastructure improvements. The small-scale commercial opportunities provided by this project will also provide literally hundreds of people and families an opportunity to walk or bike to commercial establishments. Nearby friends in the rail trail. It will also open up the Clear Creek School Attendance Zone to families who can't afford to buy relatively expensive large homes on large lots. And who are looking for more affordable homes where their kids can safely walk to school. Finally, the creative use of this tiny amount of land is an excellent example of a sort of innovative mixed-use compact development our county needs. Our county needs more of in order to house families while minimizing the impact on sensitive county land. Denying projects like these not only puts increased pressures on prices and rents in the midst, in the midst of a serious housing shortage. It also places increased development pressure on land further out where buy right, larger lot, large home development is already eating away at our community's green fields and more rural areas. Which makes it that much harder to achieve the county's goal of keeping rural Monroe County rural. And provide a more attainable housing opportunities for the community. More and smaller homes that minimize impervious surface area doesn't just make financial sense for families and fiscal sense for the county. It makes environmental sense as well. Please approve this petition so a passionate local home builder can bring these efficient and much-needed homes and infrastructure improvements. To our creative, big-hearted and growing community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Let's hear from other supporters. Ms. Crabtree, good morning.
Hi, Kathy Crabtree. I've lived in Bloomington and Monroe County for over three decades. With nearly ten years of that time in rural Monroe County. While I'm not speaking on behalf of the Monroe County Affordable Housing Advisory Commission. I do want to mention that I chair that commission and I have served on it since its inception. Because it speaks to my interest in housing for all folks. I'm grateful to the county commissioners for unanimously passing the Housing as a Human Rights Resolution. And I appreciate your support of housing for all. This project addresses many of the points included in that resolution. This project provides workforce housing and alternatives to traditional homes. Which is important because not everyone who wants to live in a rural area can afford or even wants a traditional home. The area currently has the feel of a failed industrial zone. With the existing pole barns and the spaces sometimes used as an illegal dump. This project is a revitalization of an area sorely in need of it. And helps return the village-like feel to the Clear Creek community. It provides neighborhood businesses that the residents of Clear Creek community can use. Which allows them to access many services and conveniences without travel into town. I love the hiking trail, especially since it's in a floodplain. This is a smart use of this space. The multi-use path is very near to the Clear Creek Trail. So these businesses are a destination for folks who want to pop off the Clear Creek Trail from a bike ride, jog or walk and grab a coffee. The improvements to Rogers will make crossing from the Clear Creek Trail safer. For the folks who live in the Clear Creek community. It provides a green space for families to gather using the picnic table and benches. I also like the fact that it connects to the sidewalk network, allowing students to walk to school safely. This is a tricky area and as one neighbor mentioned during the Plan Commission meeting. This area will be built on eventually. It makes sense to support this project because it is well thought out and is being proposed by a local home builder. Who has demonstrated their commitment to work with the Plan Commission and Plan Staff. I know it's important to this community that we support local home builders versus outside developers. I support this project and I ask that the county commissioners approve it. So much for your service.
Thank you, Ms. Crabtree. All right, next we have Mr. Shelton.
Thank you. Good morning again, Commissioners. Jim Shelton speaking for the Chamber of Commerce. We don't take positions on individual projects, but we are strongly taking the position of which I think is obvious that we need more housing. We need more housing diversity. We need some housing that workforce can afford. To start out when they're first getting hired. You've heard from Mr. Yonkman the difficulty he's having. With new hires. So we encourage you to please work with this developer. And if there's any way you can get everything solved or addressed that you're concerned about. That you certainly work with them to get a development like this in this area. It seems like a perfect area. I used to walk down there all the time. On the rails to trails. It'd be a nice neighborhood node or neighborhood center, if you will. You got three schools right around there, so that'd be a good place for young families to start out. I know when we started out here some fifty, some years ago, we started out renting an apartment and then moved into a condo. And eventually, after going to DC for a while, came back and had a, and you know, a home that was on a lot by itself with a bunch of grass I had to mow. And now we've downsized into a smaller condo again. So this, we need this kind of variety. We need a lot of it. And we certainly encourage you to work with this developer. And see if you in the planning department and they can't come. To an agreement on your concerns and their needs because our community really needs this kind of housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton. Next we have Mr. Riggins.
Yes, this is Mark Riggins.
Yes, yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, I just didn't see the clock starting. So anyway, I just like to speak that I'm a longtime Bloomington, proud Bloomington resident. I've been here for all but a short time when I was first born. We, my parents moved here when I was less than one year old. Been here since sixty-seven years in Bloomington. And after living various places in the community, I, we moved out to. To the Clear Creek area and thirty years ago. And I'm just loving this particular area, just have a tight community. The people in our neighborhood are just wonderful and loving and caring for each other. It's the ideal place for me. Hopefully I don't. Oh, I don't cause a big influx of people into this area because it's nice the way it is, but it certainly is just wonderful in, in living here. One thing is I'm a huge walker. My, I can think back to my grandmother. She lived on Dunn Street. And she was local to everything and she would be able to walk to whatever she had to do. She didn't drive. She didn't have a license her whole life. But she was able to drive or walk to wherever she want, wanted. And so I'm, I'm averaging about eighteen thousand steps a day right now. And this is part of the area. I've walked down the Clear Creek Trails, walked down Roger Street. And one particular thing that this development is going to do, an offshoot, not, I'll speak to some of the other amenities later, but. Just improving the walking on Roger Street because it's, it's, you're dodging traffic when you're walking on Rogers and. And having a development with help in, in that foot traffic would be amazing. It would just help the area so much. I'm an artist. I do, retired from the, my other jobs, but I'm, I'm working as an artist now and the aesthetics of what this project. Shows with the brick, harkening back to the old type of structures, I just love instead of some other, you know, the. Nothing against strip malls because they have a function, but the, the aesthetics of this particular development are just, you know, what we'd want. And again, just a walkable area for our area. There's a lot of times that I'll want to have a meeting with somebody. And I have to drive to town to have a meeting with somebody because there's nothing in this area. I just look forward to saying, here, meet me at this coffee shop down at this corner and we'll, I'll just walk down there. Just, I, I think this is a great improvement and just want to speak in support of this project.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Mr. McKim, Councilor McKim.
Yes, do you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Jeff McKim and I serve on the county council and I'm the county council's representative to the Plan Commission. But my comments are entirely my own. I first want to thank you for hearing this petition and also to encourage you to vote yes. We have the opportunity to help the Clear Creek Village area back to actually being a village. It already has the right bones, schools within walking distance, infrastructure, trails, existing commercial businesses, even a post office. All it needs is some thoughtful investment, which you have a plan for right in front of you. But the existing zoning isn't conducive to this kind of community-oriented investment. Recall the uses that are currently authorized. Appliance repair, electrical repair, industrial equipment repair, locksmith. Office equipment repair, photographic services, plastic products assembly. Optical instruments and lenses, electrical devices, engineering and scientific, glass and glassware. Office and computer equipment, transfer or storage terminal. How does that zoning help build community? The answer is it doesn't. But in front of us, we have a plan to make creative and effective use of a challenging piece of property. That currently is mostly used as an illegal trash dump into an attractive community hub. A community hub with several much-needed diverse housing types. And with neighborhood commercial amenities to serve not just the property, but all of the surrounding residential area. A walkable, bikeable, and yes, drivable community hub that can help tie the neighborhood, the community together. Finally, the petitioner is also a local property owner and developer with deep roots in the community and a commitment in particular to the Clear Creek Village area. When we hear so much frustration with out-of-town developers who, who buy just to exploit and profit on the high demand here and take profits out of the community. We really need to support our local folks who want to invest here and stay here. I hope you'll welcome this thoughtful investment in the community and support this petition and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. McKim. Next we have the BEDC.
Good morning. Thank you so much. My name is Jen Pearl and I represent the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation, which is dedicated to the retention, development. And attraction of quality jobs in Monroe County. We're not in a position to comment on the technical aspects of this proposal, but we do wish to express appreciation. For the commissioners' work with petitioners to address housing needs in our community. When newer existing companies are looking to invest in Monroe County, they review quality of life factors that impact their employees. This includes adequate workforce housing options for their current and future employees. With adequate housing defined by factors such as. With adequate housing defined by factors such as housing quality, cost, and quantity. Housing supply has been a concern for many of our members as well as other employers across Monroe County. We've heard from employers and employees alike about these concerns. A report actually pulled today by the Bloomington Board of Realtors shows very few homes for sale in Bloomington. With only ten new listings, ten pending listings, and ten closed listings. Beyond supply, quality of life, housing diversity, and support for local business is a very important component of any vibrant community. These are the things that make Monroe County a great place to live, work, and play. And we greatly appreciate the commissioner's consideration of ways to improve these aspects of our community. And to improve this section of the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Pearl. Mr. Enright Randolph.
Yes, hi. I appreciate your time this morning. I'm speaking as a citizen of Monroe County. I also briefly do want to say I did support this petition as a plan commission member. And I'm, and I'm not speaking as county surveyor either, just as Tron Enright Randolph, the guy that likes to run on the B-line to the rail trail down up Clear Creek, you know, sometimes on the limestone greenway. I've ran the car screenway. I've even went past, I think it's called Vernal Pike Greenway, Will Detmore Park. I'm an avid bike rider too, but not like recreational. I commute on my bike mainly. So my comment here is, there's been a lot that's went into this. And I think my observation with some of the discussion is the commissioners do like a lot of elements of this proposal. And my hopes is that you work with the petitioner. And if there are concerns, instead of voting it down, that you would address your concerns into conditions and send it back to the plan commission. I think that this area definitely could serve a community good. With everything that was stated with the Clear Creek residents and adding maybe some commercial space with residential and rental spaces, I think they're all great. And plus the improvements and the connectivity that it could enhance. Like I said, I think this is a very favorable proposal for our community. And if there are concerns, let's work with the petitioner to address those concerns. And then send it back to the plan commission and see if we can all move something forward positively. Thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Enright Randolph. Does anyone else wish to speak in favor of this petition? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to this petition? Just raise your hand at bottom of the Zoom screen. Ms. Clemens, good morning.
Hello, my name is Margaret Clemens and I serve as president of the Monroe County Plan Commission. And I've heard this case several times come before us at, at the plan commission. I'm also vice president of the Board of Zoning Appeals and I serve on the Monroe County Economic Development Commission as well as the East Monroe Water Corporation Board of Directors. I've lived in Bloomington for, in and around Bloomington for more than forty years. And I've lived in almost every housing type that Bloomington has to offer. And a lot of the people who spoke in favor of this petition have been really forcefully pushing for more multifamily housing and mixed-use housing all over Bloomington. Such that in the name of requesting diversified housing stock, we're building almost solely multifamily housing. The Bloomington Economic Development Corporation and the Regional Opportunities Initiative estimated that we need somewhere between five thousand, around five thousand two hundred multi, or housing units by the year twenty thirty. And based on a lot of this pressure that we've been receiving from special interest groups like well, like the people who spoke before us, we've built over four thousand five hundred and twenty-two multifamily units in the city in the last three years. Now, that doesn't include things that are currently under consideration like the Kmart property, a lot of the restricted-use housing, like actually affordable housing and elderly housing. And it doesn't include the hospital site, the warehouse on Rogers. In other words, we have built enough multifamily housing. If we really do care about the workforce and about the changing nature of our community and the changing demands for workers in our community. We should stop. We should not build this. We should not build this, especially on sensitive land with a bunch of sinkholes around it. I just, I think that we really need to take a look at our community. Reconcile what's been done, what's in the pipeline to be approved, what's in the pipeline to be built. Don't overdensify. Build smarter. Don't build just more, than more of the same thing. I drive by buildings all over town where this mixed-use residential multifamily housing has been built. And the bottom floors are empty. The idea has failed. The idea has failed. So let's just take a look at it. Build more single-family housing, meet the need of your true constituents. And I just urge you to vote no on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Right at the buzzer. Okay. All right, let's see if there's anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition to this petition. Okay, seeing none. Does anybody have any general comments, public comment to make on this petition? Neither in favor or opposition, but just general comments. You've already spoken once, so we just need new, yeah, we'll just take one, one speaker per item. Okay. All right, so excellent. So now let's turn it back over to my colleagues and see if there are any comments or questions you might have. We'll start with Commissioner Jones.
Yes, well, I see a lot about this to really like. I'm very pleased that it's a local developer who clearly cares a lot about the area. And does want to benefit it. I think that it will improve there. The way it is now really is not very acceptable at all. I just, I just feel that a bit too much is being passed into this. If it creates problems in the future, as, as I believe it probably will with the other things that will be happening in that area that will be increasing the density significantly. Well, if these problems actually take place, we have no way of solving them. And that really concerns me. I feel that in its present form, as much as I like this, it's really kind of an example of compact urban sprawl. I, I'm not sure that this is, well, I do think this is a good development for this area. I just would like to see it be scaled back a little bit to decrease the density somewhat. Thank you.
Right, thank you, Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Giffens, do you have any comments or questions you'd like to make?
Yeah, I, I appreciate all the incredible work Ms. Cassidy has put into this project and all the people who've joined us today to speak in favor of the proposed rezone. However, I remain very concerned about the density, the, what I view as insufficient parking and what could be a lot of increased traffic in and out at different hours of the day. So I would like, as Commissioner Jones has stated more eloquently than I can, I would like to see something brought back to us with less density and more adequate parking. Thank you.
Right, thank you. And I have had a lot of opportunity to speak with the developer and to work on this as it went through the plan commission process. I, again, agree, these, this is a creative idea. The design is great. And it's, it's nice to imagine a sort of a community feel that would have emerged from this, sort of like when you go through Unionville or Harrisburg or other communities that we have. I think that is what we would all like to see, and it sounds like everyone's in agreement on that. The building design is great. The ability to adapt and to make changes has been really phenomenal. And I want to thank Ms. Cassidy for that. I think that that is awesome. But while I support the idea of having mixed use, I just think that this is too much density for the county. This building is going to be tall, very tall. The first building, Building A, is going to be very tall. Especially compared to the immediately, immediate surrounding community. I'm very concerned about what former plan commissioner John Urban called the road shed. Meaning how much road do we have? And if we're looking at developments in a couple other places right in this vicinity, that Roadner Rogers Road, as we heard from our, our highway department a few weeks ago, there, there's no plan to enlarge these. And then we're going to be stuck with a community problem of increased traffic. I would like to see this as a smaller development. Yes, it's great that it went from four, four stories to three, but the showers building is two stories. Let's remember that. And and I just feel like one less building, one less floor, something needs to change. And I give great credence to the planning staff who have worked with this petitioner and worked with the plan commission on all of this and the fact that they recommend denial based on zoning subdivision regulations such as density, dimension, build, bulk use required improvements and construction and design standards. I know it's not a construction design standard issue. It is certainly a height bulk density issue. We are the county. We are not the city. If, and you know, and let's just, let's just be clear about that. We are the county and we can do some higher density, but I don't think we should look like the city. And I don't think that residents want parts of the city spread throughout the county. People who want to live in the city, live in the city. But let's also be clear that we do need housing. We need different kinds of housing. We need different types. I like the idea of purchase or rent. The townhome idea is great. But again, we're just trying to do far too much on a really small piece of property, which is bookmarked, bookended, sorry, bookended by floodplain. And, you know, we're, we don't want to invite problems for residents or commercial business owners in this area. So I would really like this to come back as something scaled back. You can provide housing and you can provide that opportunity. And you could provide commercial opportunity, but to try to fit this all on this small area, I just imagine somebody, somebody's business doing well, which is great, but where are they going to park? Where are people going to park? To assume that they're gonna park in a, in a different subdivision or, you know, but there's just nothing on that or Rogers. Where they, where that and Rogers exist now. There's nothing. There's no way to park. So we just, I would like to see this reconfigured. I made that statement before. Some changes were made. I just, I just don't think this meets the feel of the county. And so I'm inclined to vote no on this. So with that, we, it's time for a vote on this item. And our attorney has had to go to another meeting.
I'm actually still here.
Oh, you are here. Yay, excellent.
A few agenda items I still need to cover.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Would you please call the roll on this item?
Commissioner Thomas?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
No.
Commissioner Giffens?
No.
Motion fails, oh three.
Thank you so much. Hopefully, petitioner will return to, with another project that meets the density as it, as it appears. We all would like to see something besides light industrial here, but but we are concerned about density, so we encourage and ask the petitioner to return with something that, that can work with the size of a lot that's there. All right, so with that, we will move on to, oh, actually, you know what? Let's take a quick break. And let's make it we want to do five minutes? Ten minutes? Ten? Six minutes? Got it. Six minutes, twelve fifteen. We're gonna take a, a quick recess and we will be back at twelve fifteen. Thank you, everyone, for hanging with us. You're all back. Yes, looks like it.
Yep.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna call this meeting back to order. And we will begin with item D, please.
Move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one. An environmental restrictive ordinance to amend the Monroe County Code and add chapter three sixty-six, environmental restrictive ordinance to prohibit the installation and use of private water wells within certain areas of Monroe County.
Right, we have a motion.
Second.
Great, we have a second.
Second?
Yes, I heard you. Thank you. All right, Mr. Papral, thank you.
Yes, and given the length of the meeting, I know that there are some experts and such that gave a presentation last week at the work session in, in the attendees. I thought maybe I'd give a, a quick run-through and see if you have questions and then they would be here to answer those questions if there are any. What is the request today? We did the first reading for this ordinance last week. This is the second reading, but what this does is it would put a environmental restricted ordinance on a area of land, and I think that's best described in page, on page one fifty-seven of the packet. They have a map. It's essentially south of Switchyard Park across the road from, I think that's Rogers at that point, near, near the, near the country club. So that's the general area. It's on city water and what this environmental restrictive ordinance is, it doesn't allow wells to be used or dug in, in that area. It's, it's on city water. It's on city sanitation, or it's on, it's got a sewer lines and it's got all the infrastructure necessary. They've done an extensive public outreach and they have not discovered anyone having or using a well in the area that we, that is defined in this ordinance. This ordinance is placed in the health portion of our county code so that people can look at it when, if necessary, and see what the restrictions are. I guess if you guys have any questions, more than happy to answer them. I thought it was a pretty thorough presentation last week, so.
Yeah, and I made sure I looked at that part of the meeting because that's the thing that I had questions about, so it was helpful for me to see that. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
I had a number of questions that were answered last week and no, I'm, I'm fine with this.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, I felt that, that what we heard last week was more than, more than adequate, I guess. And, and actually, I feel like this is something being put into place to protect citizens of Monroe County.
Yeah, and given that there aren't any farms in the area, that this is not a, an agricultural issue for those residents, I think that helps a great deal as well. Let's see if there are any, anyone from the public who wishes to offer Let's see if there are any, anyone from the public who wishes to offer comments, and it could be some of the folks who presented last week, if there's anything else you needed to add from last week, please just raise your hand at the bottom of the screen. We appreciate you all being here, and I apologize for the length of our meeting today. I do not see any hands raised. So with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on ordinance 2021-21?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Great, thank you so much. And now we are on to item E, please.
Move to approve solar energy solutions agreement. Fund name, 2019 G-EW bond, fund number 4812, in the amount of eighty-three thousand, six hundred, six, sorry, eighty-three thousand, two hundred, sixty-eight dollars.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Excellent. Mr. Cockrell, will you please tell us all about this?
Yes, we, we asked for three quotes for this project. This is essentially putting solar panels on our newly constructed emergency management center out by the highway garage. It includes the work for dealing with the proximity to the airport, making sure that every, everybody's safe that way. This is for 120 solar panels with all the invertal, inverters, and all the other necessary, the, the racks and everything required. And these were the low quotas.
Great, thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, not at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Giffens?
I'm proud to see us moving even more in direction of solar.
Yeah, it's, I agree, and it's my hope that our next step will be to get another assessment done of our entire community. The last one was done in 2011? It's been a while, maybe 2010, since we had a full assessment. And I think it would be worth doing, especially, hopefully, we'll be moving toward more plug-in vehicles, and we could power them with solar rather than coal. So that would be the hope. So hopefully, that is our next step, but I'm really excited to see this project moving forward, and I know we can do more out at the highway garage area, and I'm excited to see what else we can do, but this is a good first step. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item, just raise your hand at the bottom of the screen. Remember, everyone's limited to three minutes. Per person, okay. Okay, I don't see any. So Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the solar energy solutions agreement?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move to approve ordinance 2021-20 regarding adding chapter, emergency health enforcement action appeal to the Monroe County Code.
We have a motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Thank you so much. Mr. Cockrell, please tell us all about this.
Yes, this will be Chapter 307 of, of the code, and when, when you do the code update, that you'll do that kind of approval as well, but just to let everybody knows where, where it will be. As I'm sure you are aware, and maybe the public would like to be aware, the state senate, or the state legislature passed over the governor's veto, a bill that allow, that requires a hearing process in the event of a, from a health enforcement action as a result of a emergency health declaration. So it's, it was clearly COVID-related from, from their standpoint, and so in that legislation, they set up a level of appeals process, requiring the, the county to, you know, adopt policies and regulations for that appeals process for people who get health enforcement acts, actions based upon a local health order. And so we have one of those in place. We, you should remember that a few weeks ago, you guys actually approved the, the local health order, which is another requirement of that, of that statute. I think probably the most important thing in here for the public to know is the criteria that you guys are going to look at when, when people apply for an appeal. And that is that enforcing the health order would have an inverse impact to individuals experiencing a disability. The appellant has a compelling interest that justifies deviation from the health order, and have taken measures that ensures public health, or that the appellant appeals that no violation of the emergency health order occurred. Those are kind of the three criteria. Rough timeline for the process, if someone files the appeal, they have to deal with in seven days of receipt of the, of the enforcement action, the ticket or whatever they're given. You guys have 15 days to determine whether a hearing is going to be held. If you do determine a hearing going to be held, then it has to be within 15 days of that determination. That's kind of the basic timeline. Those are the basic criteria we're going to look at. There's provisions about how information shared, and, and some other statutory required features, but those are kind of the big ones that I think everyone would want to know.
Excellent, thank you so much. That's great information. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
Really, just that I certainly plan to continue being guided by our actual experts in public health when it comes to this process and these decisions. I don't believe that they've been at all unreasonable so far, and I, I think that it's quite unlikely that there will be lots of appeals that make me feel that the public health specialists have gotten things wrong.
Right. Commissioner Giffens?
I just wanted to ask whether or not, if somebody files an appeal, whether the appeal applies only to that individual or across the board with the, the ruling for the whole county?
Well, it applies to the individual. There are provisions that if you, if we have multiple people appealing on the, on the same merit, we can combine those. So there is some, but this would be much like if you go to, if you file a case in the, in the court system, the resolution applies only to, to that case. Now, I would say that I would, that the commissioner should look to be consistent with, with how they do things, but I think you guys already know that. So there would be some precedent set for certain things, but it would only apply directly to the individual who appealed.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I'm, I'm really glad we're moving forward with this, and, and this is sort of a corollary to the, the piece that we already approved at the end of April, right, which, which reified our support for the health order, just in case Senate Bill 5 passed, which it, it did, but then the governor vetoed, and then it got overridden this week, so it became effective immediately. But we're conforming with that law by doing this. Is there any other piece of this that we need to worry about based on the contents of Senate Bill 5?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, clearly, when we start getting appeals, we'll have to worry about the calendars, and, and I guess on an initial blush, I think that looking at when we have the township assistance appeals time would probably be the time we would expect to do that, but, you know, the, the timeframes are different between the two, so we'll, we'll figure that out as we go.
Yeah, and that's also when we can hear appeals on driveway permits for highways, so it, it makes sense to fold it into that process if we can. That would be great. Okay, let's see if there's any, and once again, I, I think it's important, and I know I'm speaking for my colleagues when I say I want to thank our Health Department and the board for doing such an excellent job throughout the pandemic. So, thank you all, and the state's wrong, and I'm glad that you're doing the right thing and that we can support you. Let's see, let's see if you all don't mind me speaking for you, because I know that we're all on the same page on that one. So let's see if we have any public comment. Ms. Clemmons?
Well, I just, you know, I don't want to waste your time, because I know how precious, how long these meetings can go, but I just really want to shout, make a shout out to you three commissioners, and also to the Health Department for the way you stewarded our city to safety. We were, you really did a great job, and as a resident of, of the county, I just am so thankful that you worked so hard to also protect the city, and, and you did such a great job, and I just am so grateful to you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clemmons. Check is in the mail. No, I'm just kidding. Thank you for that unsolicited, very kind compliment. Yeah, we appreciate that, and you're right, it's the, the Health Board, Health Department has really just been amazing. So it's been easy to support them. Okay, so let's see if there's any other public comments on this item. All right, seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on ordinance 2021-20?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah.
Commissioner Giffens? Commissioner Giffens? We'll say it's, the motion passes two to zero.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Oh. I'm having trouble with my connection again. I didn't hear my name called to vote yes.
Well, then Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Awesome. Thank you so much. We will now move on to item G, please.
Move to approve in that agreement for rehabilitation of the Rogers Street Bridge number 908. Fund name, cumulative bridge, fund number 1135, in the amount of four hundred, seven thousand dollars.
Second.
Great, we have a motion, and we have a second, Mr. Turner. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, thank you. On April 29th, Monroe County received notice that we were awarded a project in the Community Crossing Matching Grant Program. This project is for a bridge rehabilitation for Rogers Street Bridge number 908. The bridge is just located north of 11th Street. The total cost of the project is eight hundred and fourteen thousand. Monroe County was awarded four hundred and seven thousand for the bridge project. Project should be completed in 2021.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Mr. Turner. Let's see if there are comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't have any.
Commissioner Giffens?
I, I just want to thank the Highway Department for getting these matching funds on this.
They're, they're very helpful.
Yeah, kudos on yet another Community Crossings Grant Award. They're just stacking up, and it benefits the community in so many ways. And a reminder to everyone in the public that the county is responsible for all bridges in the county, even when they're located in a town or a city. And, and I just noticed on the closed captioning that my diction is poor, because it's coming out as Commissioner kittens. So we'll have to work on that. Anyway, sorry, too funny. It's already been a long day. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item.
I, I don't know what to do.
And I don't see any public comment on this item. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the in-don agreement for the rehabilitation of Rogers Street Bridge 908?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens? Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Excellent, we'll get there eventually. Only have a couple more items. All right, let's move on to item H, please.
Move to approve Christopher B. Burke Engineering LLC on-call agreement. Fund name, Stormwater, fund number 1197, in, in an amount to be decided.
Right, we have a, and we have a second. Excellent. Ms. Patonia?
Hello, commissioners, everyone. Thank you. So this is a contract that will be for on-call services to perform plan reviews for drainage reviews as part of the plan review process for new development and redevelopment projects. This is sort of a secondary contract. And the company knows that we may have occasional reviews for them, but it's not our primary plan review contract. So this one is a bit different from our other plan review contract, because we'll have the availability of oversight from a professional engineer if needed. And Christopher B. Engineering, we've worked with them before, they're, they've helped us with our stormwater ordinance update, and they do this service for many MS4s around the state. So if you have any questions for me, please let me know.
Great, thank you so much. Let's see if there's any comments or questions from Commissioner Jones?
No, just that this is probably another step that will help speed up getting plans okayed. So I'm, I'm glad to see it happening.
Excellent. Commissioner Giffens?
No, now that I have full connectivity, I can participate better. No questions.
All right. And I don't have any either. I'm glad you're pursuing this. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the Christopher B. Burke Engineering on-call agreement?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Patonia. We'll see you in a little bit. Let's go to item I, please.
Move to approve Beam Longsniff's scope of work for Bridge number 83 and number 913. Fund name, cumulative bridge, fund number 1135, in the amount of fifty thousand dollars.
Second.
Right, we have a motion, and we have a second, Mr. Turner.
Yes, we, we currently have an existing on-call hourly agreement with Beam Longsniff. We're wanting to use that currently, current service for preliminary work on Bridge number 83, which is on Gilman Road, and Bridge number 913, which is on Business 37. Both these bridges are steel pony-trust bridges, they're historic bridges, and these bridges take extra time in trying to get set up for rehabilitation projects. We want to get, get going on that work.
Great, thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, I'm just always pleased when bridges are being repaired.
Yes. Commissioner Giffens?
No, this is just another way that our Highway Department takes care of the safety of our citizens, so I appreciate that.
Excellent. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. And while we're waiting to see if anyone raises a hand, using the raise hand feature at the bottom of the screen, I will say I appreciate the continued efforts of being proactive that our Highway Department engages in. So thank you for that. Always thinking two steps ahead or more. All right, don't see any public comments. So, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the Beam Longsniff's scope of work for Bridge 83 and 913?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And again, to everyone, we did have a really long agenda item, but it was really, a lot of good information was conveyed, so that's helpful. We don't have any appointments today. Do have just a few announcements, I will keep them brief. Do have just a few announcements. I will keep them brief. First and foremost, we are looking for applicants for boards and commissions across the, across the spectrum. Go to co-monroe.in.us, but in particular, we have a call for a board member for the South Central Community Action Program. So if you are interested, please apply as soon as possible. Also, a note that if you live anywhere in Monroe County, whether you're in a town, a city, or in rural areas, you have a township trustee. If you are having difficulty paying for utilities, rent, or other basic necessities, please contact your trustee as soon as possible. The Board of Commissioners has worked with the county council to provide funding through a Township Assistance Fund to our township trustees. And so far, we have provided eighty thousand six hundred eighty-three dollars in direct aid grants to 148 households in the county. So if you need assistance, contact your trustee. There's a full list at the emergency management website through co-monroe.in.us. Does anyone else have any other announcements?
I just want to thank Greg Cohn, our new facilities and fleet manager, who's managed to help me stay in this meeting today. It's been a real challenge, but he's been there every step of the way, so.
Good thing, good thing we stole him from the IT department. Thank you, Greg. So we do have a work session, believe it or not. This marathon continues. But let's take five minutes, 12:57, 47 by my clock, 12:47 by my clock. And we will come back and engage in all of the work sessions on and probably that we can. So we'll see you in a bit. As of now, though, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.